When you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, good evening, folks. Thank you for coming tonight. Welcome to the Board of Selectment Meeting, April 7th. If you could please stand.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, and at this time, we will open up the meeting to public comments. We respectfully request the items already on the agenda not be addressed, and that your comments be limited to three minutes, so that everyone has the opportunity to address the board. Later in the agenda, there will be a second opportunity to address items raised during the meeting. Public comments.
I'm hoping someone else has something to say.
Nothing yet. Any public comments?
If not, then I will.
All right.
And I have in front of me a piece of paper that came by an unknown hand, which I will obviously not comment about. If you have it, you will know what I'm talking about. I have for the last month, in trying to speak Larry Brown, 1362 Wide Mountain Highway, for the last month, trying to speak to what I will call the health, safety, and welfare of the town of Milton, which every elected person and every citizen has a right to be concerned about. Right now, The Wall Street Journal, on Sunday, April 5th, market carnage worsens. Millions of people have seen their retirement accounts tank. J.P. Morgan Bank, J.P. Morgan in 1906, I believe, personally saved the United States government from a recession with his own money. That ain't happening now. There have been massive, massive destructions. But that is only part of it. What I want to bring is something that affects many of the people who work in the shipyard, many of the people who have served in our armed forces, and many of us, many of them. Pardon me if this, I cannot do a computer. I'm trying to get this out of the way, so I can read it. I have just lost the names of the four soldiers who died in Lithuania. The president of Lithuania, the armed forces, and perhaps a thousand citizens came out carrying American flags to say farewell to the bodies going back to the United States. April 3rd, Trump was in a three trifecta golf course, and he won the second round of championship while the bodies were being returned to Dover. You can draw what conclusions you want from that. It is my own opinion, but he is such a fortunate man that the bone spurs on his heels give him better purchase on the cleats in his golf shoes.
Thank you, Larry. Announcements in the community calendar. Please help protect our lakes and drinking water. Clean up your yard waste. Construction to finish Phase 2 on Dawson Street, Silver Street project from the fall of 2024 has started on Silver Street in intersections of Silver Street and Steeple. Please accept, please expect delays and alterations to the traffic patterns in these areas during the duration of this project. Milton Police Department, in conjunctions with Broadview Veterinary Hospital of Milton, will be holding the rabies clinic, Department of Public Works building on April 12th, 25, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Please have your dogs on leashes and your cats in carriers. So the town clerk will also be in attendance to license your dog that resides in Milton. So it's actually nice that the town clerks need to register the pets when you get them shot. So thank you, Brian, for doing that. Next, new business. Today, we are going to be swearing in our K-9 Officer Red, Chief Hebert.
All right. So we skip the part where he's supposed to repeat after you.
I think he should.
Is that Andy? So I'll talk a little bit about Red, and then I'll let Dave talk a little bit about Red. So K-9 Red is a two-year-old DDR, German Shepherd, which is a long German name, but it just really means East German. He was imported to the United States for working dog purposes. This was made possible through the Stanton Foundation. Stanton Foundation supports the establishment and maintenance of K-9 programs in New England. This grant covers the cost of our K-9 program over a three-year period. K-9 Red has partnered with Officer Watts and began narcotics training today at the Hillsborough Police Department K-9 School. This training will continue through June, followed by a break until September, when Officer Watts and K-9 Red will participate in patrol school until mid-December. The addition of a K-9 team to our roster will significantly enhance our capabilities in narcotic searches, tracking, and suspect apprehension. Red will also be available for mutual aid to surrounding communities who sign our new mutual aid compact that does say that we have a police K-9. So you got anything to say, Dave? Anything you want to say?
No, just I'm excited to start my training today and further help the department and the town with anything we can.
Hey, Chief, can you slide that off, so they can, people at home can see Red?
Oh, they can't see him? Like, move this over? Which way, left or right?
That's Karen, that worked.
All right, so, whatever you want.
Make him raise his hand, Larry.
He doesn't like his paw touching.
Anyway, my wife's dog's a lot, but it's not swearing a men. Anyway, so Red, whereas this is a vacancy of the office of the Milton Police Department, in the said town of, whereas we, the subscriber, have confidence in your ability, integrity, and the former duties of said office, we do hereby point you, K-9 Red, to this position of police K-9 of said town of Milton, and upon your bearing of oath of the office and having this appointment in the certificate of said oath in office recorded by the town clerk, you shall have the powers to perform the duties and subject to liabilities in such office until another person shall be chosen and qualified in your stead. Thank you, Red. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dave.
All right. That's not a good sign, really.
That's the reason I don't want that clock, but.
Anything else for me to sign? Do you have to sign that? He can't sign it.
He can't.
You mean to fingerprint his paw?
He'll put his paw print.
His paw's been touched, though.
I knew it. I already warn those guys. He likes to jump. I know.
You got something hungry we should know about?
I carry dog food with me at all points in time, just in case. I just know he jumps, so.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Department had reports, the police department, I guess.
They're walking away.
You miss here for.
Usually I'm in the way.
You have something on number three. Should we?
I don't mind.
I think we should let Brian, Brian go first. I'm on three. I got a bunch of things to do.
I'll go.
Yeah, you can go. Brian can go.
We should go the other way around. Karen go last.
Yeah, I know. Right, so the Easter egg hunt happened this Saturday, and we had a good turnout. I don't know what the numbers were, probably fifty, sixty people. The kids had a blast. They were able to decorate eggs and make bird feeders, and we had a volunteer from the senior class come and help us with the Easter bunny costume, which was awesome. Summer kickoff is going to be held on June 14th, and we're looking for community organizations, vendors, and anybody that wants to join in the fun. We will not be having boat races this year. They've decided because of the weather of the past two years that they don't want to participate. So it's too much of a risk to have them come as far as they come to be in the races, just to have them have to pull the boats. So we'll make it a big family day. The scouts are involved already. We have the Community Church of Milton that's going to be involved. Rec will do some things, and we're looking for other people in town that want to participate to, just give me a call, shoot me an email to let us know you're interested. We have vendor applications that will go out and just make sure that we want food, we want anything that wants, any vendor that wants to participate would love to have you. Camp Three Ponds has been taking registration since February. We're up to 122 children right now, and we will open up for part-time campuses in the next couple of days to just fill in the open slots. We have a lot of full-time guys, but there is some weeks that they want off, and we'll take part timers and stick them in, so that every slot is filled. Kids' Night Hour is going to happen on April 18th at Newt High School, and some of our few guys are going to come play basketball with us, give the kids something new to do and to get to know the police offices in town a little bit better. Senior Bingo is on Tuesday mornings at 10:00 a.m., and that room is always packed. The folks can come in at 8:00 o'clock in the morning and hang out and play cards, do whatever they want to do, and socialize until the bingo starts at 10:00. Our classes for chair yoga, yoga stretch, and zumba dance will be starting back up on April 14th. Will be the Monday night, Monday class, and go from there. Zumba Dance is on Wednesday evenings from 6:00 to 7:00, and we also have Granite State Tang So Do, that is our martial arts class that's here, that happens from, on Saturday mornings, from 7:00 to 10:30, and again on Thursday evenings from 6:00 to 8:30, and he has open positions if people want to join in on the fun. And then we have the monthly newsletter that gets put out here. They have some here on the counter. We have them at both the post offices, and it gets put out to multiple Facebook accounts, but I'm still hearing people are not getting information from Town Hall as to what's going on, so if anybody has any suggestions, because that's what I heard at the Easter egg hunt.
They're not getting it, no.
They're not getting it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, up next, Brian.
So some, some fun stuff to report. We've had a very busy first quarter of 2025. We've seen a drastic increase in vehicle registrations, new title applications, which means people are out there purchasing brand-new vehicles, which is great, because they will be able to pay their delinquent tax notices that just went out last week. We will be looking towards the lien process starting in June. The notices will go out. They will be executed on July 14th, just so people are fully aware, and we can be transparent about when that process will happen. I would like to ask the board, kind of to go along with Karen, as far as notifications for permission to start a Facebook page for the town clerk. It wouldn't be a responsive page, but it would be a way for us to have all of our information out there if the office was closed. You know, for example, dog licenses are due April 30th. People would be able to go there and see and get all the answers to information, because it might not be easy to access the town website, say, if you're on your smartphone. I know it's a lot easier to navigate a Facebook page versus clicking a bunch of tabs, so I just need.
More, more or less just informational.
Right, it'd just be Milton Town Clerk, and we'll be posting, you know, if the office has to close, if we're deciding to change hours, you know, the dog licenses, tax bills going out, just those, those kind of reminders for, for the town, so they'd be able to get all the information that they need.
Okay, Brian, I'll make a motion to move forward with the Facebook page for the town clerk.
Second that.
Is any?
I don't have any issues.
No issues.
No, no issues. Information is good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And then I'll come back up.
You can just stay.
All right, so the other thing I actually need that you guys to vote on is the new voting machine. Now that the budget has been approved and that was included in the town clerk's budget, we do need to notify the state of any changes that we make to the voting tabulation systems that we use here in town, and RSA 656:40 gives you guys the permission to make the authority to purchase that. We just need to have it in the minutes. So the price of the machine is $7,000. As we know, there is the rebate program out there per the state that they will give us $3,500, so the cost of the town will only be $3,500 after all is said and done. I just need a motion to purchase the Dominion Image Cast Precinct 2. Very specific on that one, from you guys.
Motion so said.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic.
And the school will get there.
Your second one, yeah.
Yes, they, we've actually, I was talking to Kim, their budget starts in July, so we've already put them in touch with LHS, so that they can begin their process, and it will be the same for them. So we will have two machines, just like we've always had.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, up next, Police Chief.
Okay. So, scratch out the part about Red. I would just like to take a moment to remember Dave Johnson. Dave Johnson passed away April 1st. Dave was a valued member of our community and will be deeply missed by his friends and family. Dave was an officer for the Milton Police Department and kept the boat patrol program active, so I just wanted to incorporate it in my monthly report. So since the beginning of the year, the Milton Police Department has had some significant personnel changes. We hired Adam Duran back in January. Adam joins us from the University of New Hampshire Police Department. He didn't have a swearing-in ceremony, so he kind of did it just with the town clerk. Adam brings valuable experience as a detective, and he is a current member of ICAC, which is Internet Crimes Against Children. With Adam on board, we now have the capacity to conduct our own investigations in-house, eliminating having to field that out to a larger agency. Adam has the equipment to do so, so we're going to utilize him. Unfortunately, we do send a lot of those ICAC cases out to other larger departments, so now we can do that in-house and hopefully get a faster return and be able to prosecute suspects for that faster. Additionally, we're pleased to welcome back Mark Silly. Mark brings with him 11 years of law enforcement experience. Officer Silly has an extensive background, including time in grade with one of the busiest agencies, in my opinion, in the state, and will be a tremendous asset to our department. Officer Jason Bonzel successfully completed his training at New Hampshire Police Standards and Training Academy and is now a certified police officer, so that's good. He tested out, so he will soon begin his field training and be prepared for solo patrol shortly thereafter. Sergeant McNulty has successfully completed this first DARE session at the fifth-grade level at the low, at our elementary school. Graduation is going to be April 23 at 6:00 p.m. at the high school. Also, like to announce that Corporal Barker has been welcomed onto the Stratford County Regional SWAT team. He started training with the team and will be participating in SWAT 1 and 2 training in May of this year. This experience will help him bring essential tactical knowledge to the police department, and we'll have somebody on, in town onboard the SWAT team, which is super helpful. In the coming months, you will observe increased saturation patrols that will be conducted by the police department, funding by the Highway Safety Grant. This initiative aims to address speed violations and deter impaired driving, reinforcing the PD's commitment to maintain safe roads for all. Additionally, we'd like, we are, we'd like to inform you that we'll be hosting a Coffee with a Cop event at Buc-Ee's in Milton. It's going to be May 10th, pending final confirmation. This gathering will provide the community an important opportunity to engage with our officers in a relaxed environment while supporting a local business. We will share further details on our already established Facebook page. Our department's speed trailer will soon be deployed throughout town. If you have a specific, specific concern about speeding on your road and would like the trailer to be placed there, please contact Corporal Barker at the Milton Police Department or visit our website at miltonnhpd.com. I'd like to remind people that as the temperatures rise, just remember that the water temperature in Three Pond still remains cold. We urge everybody to exercise caution when entering the water, especially in the next coming months. Lastly, there has been an uptick in scam activity, or activity in our area, excuse me. If you suspect that a loved one has fallen victim to a scam, please reach out to the police department for assistance. Should you receive any suspicious calls or emails, don't hesitate to contact us, and please remember to never send money in the form of gift cards or money orders. If you get a phone call saying that your loved one is at the police station and needs bail money for an excessive amount of money, please contact the police department, because that's really not how that phone call would go. Thank you for your continued support. We are working as hard as we can. The department is now fully staffed, so we have eight officers. We've always had the vacancies for eight officers, but now they're completely full, so we'll be more proactive and engaging as there's more officers on the road.
Up next, you can just stand. Conversation and possible action. We got a request to purchase a replacement cruiser for Kath.
So with going in line with kind of the plan that we created last year, I'm looking to purchase another 2023 leftover from MHQ, where we purchased the last three. Tried to get them down to a lower number. They were able to give us a $5,000 credit for purchasing three from them last year, which brings the total of the car to $37,670. I would like to utilize the $34,000 that's in the cruiser purchase line, and then $3,670 out of the detail fund line to purchase that car. We're going to take the materials from Car 3, lights, mounts, accessories, and place them into the new Car 3, essentially. So I'm assuming that that will be right around $9,000, $12,000. However, that money will be, hopefully, we, you know, when we get the car, we don't have to outfit it right away, and we'll be able to allocate some more funds through the detail line through that.
Yeah, I was going to say, because you don't, we don't have any extra. I know you got enough to buy the car. Right now, it's.
Yeah, there's about $21,000 in the detail line last time I checked, so. And then the 34 would come out of the cruiser line, purchase that, throw that line anyway, so.
So, so they gave us $5,000 off?
Yeah, I mean, the car was, when we purchased the other ones, they were at 41, and then they gave us a $5,000 credit. I tried to get them as close to 34 as I possibly could, but they weren't budgeting, so.
Sure they're not, because of some prices of vehicles that are going to be.
Yeah, if we were to buy a new one, so these are 2023s, if we were to buy a 2025, they're about $46,000 right now, so. And that's just for the car.
And these cars are working out fine for you?
Yeah, I mean, there's been some, one of them came with a battery that didn't work. I mean, it, it worked. It started the car, but with all the gear inside, it didn't hold the battery charge. I think it was just an old battery. The option was for them to send a tech up at $250 an hour to tell us that we needed a $300 battery. So I said, well, I'm just going to go buy a battery instead of paying you the $250 to drive up here.
You have any questions, Matt? Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it. We just got to figure out how we're going to.
Yeah, I mean, outfitting it is obviously expensive. We're going to take the computer and the lights. I mean, that'll, that'll take down a little bit more from Car 3. It'll save us a little bit of money on the end of, on the end of detailing it as far as.
This is going to be, it is going to be sitting for a while, because right now, we're hurting. There's zero excess with everything that's going on, so.
Well, it's not an immediate, it's not an immediate need, what I'll tell you, as far as getting it on the road. Car 3 still works fine. I just, what I don't want to do is have the ability to buy a car for $10,000 cheaper than when it, when it, when Car 3 absolutely needs to be replaced towards the end of the year, and we have to buy one for 46.
No, I, and I know, one of the ones down there, the cars ran great and everything else when you, we picked up the first. There's not an issue about the car. It's, and normally I wouldn't even have a concern, but right now, with everything that's going on, and you're, we're going to get into more of it later, but I'll mention right up front, we don't have enough money to pay our bills here at this point in time, because we're about $1.4 million behind in collecting property tax. So without that, I mean, even the money we've approved, we don't have. So spending of the money, and I, and I mean, I go along with, I think it's a good idea to get the car, because we were supposed to change Car 3 two years ago, so. But it's going to end up sitting for a while, and we're just, and sitting's not good, so we're going to have to do something to make sure it, it stays vi, you know, viable without any issues from sitting, so. With that, I'll make a motion to move forward with the car, but again, we'll have to hold off until we figure out how to transfer the stuff to it, so.
Sure, yeah, no, that's fine. I'll get a quote for that from a couple places. I can do it.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, up next, Quarter One Ambulance Revolving Fund Transfer. How are you?
Good, how are you? So I emailed this to you guys on, what day was it? Just to get everybody to go over it, and so the balance at the beginning of the year was $288,000 in the ambulance revolving fund. The balance, when I ran this report on the 1st of April, was $341,000. It's up to $344,000 now. So that means we made revenue in the ballpark of $53,000 for the first quarter, which puts us on pace for over 200, which is kind of how we've based everything that we've talked about the last couple of years. With that being said, there's been a decrease in response to Middleton, but an increase in total call volume, so we're maintaining that $53,000, $50,000 a quarter roughly. Operating expenses was in the $7,000 range, and labor expenses is $25,000, and that's the, if you look at the bottom portion of it, total part-time labor was $67,000, and the amount that's in the operating budget is $42,000. So to keep that percentage where it needs to be, like we've talked about, the quarterly transfer amount is $25,000, and then $1,500 for Social Security, and another $3.65 for Medicare. If you run that out over the course of the year, that puts us on pace for around $100,000 for labor. And if you remember, back at the beginning of the year, we were talking 112-ish. Originally, when I put the budget together, it was upwards around 130, 140, so we made some adjustments when we, we talked about pay rate adjustments after the budget presentation went through. So we're on pace, actually a little under what we talked about. So all in all, I'm happy with, with everything. If you look at the available balance, it puts us at about $2.45. The fourth quarter for last year and the first quarter obviously has not been transferred out of the revolving fund to the general fund yet. I tried to get an update on the ambulance. We're still looking like May I'll have more, hopefully this week, but we need $229,000 to come out of the revolving fund, and then if we do that, we won't have to do the lease. So the current balance is 306. We have $33,000 in capital reserve and $45,000 in the lease line, which leads us to the 229. Like I just mentioned, we have 249. Like I just mentioned, we have two forty-five available right now. So everything's looking good, like we've been talking about for two years when we ordered this thing. Wasn't sure it would come around this way, but we're in good shape, so I'm happy with it.
The total's gonna be twenty-seven, one thirty-eight, ninety-six you're gonna transfer.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the transfer from the revolving.
All in favor?
Aye. That's all I had, unless you wanna talk about?
You can just, uh, permission to, to play self the service engine.
Yeah, I just wanted to feedback to you guys how you wanna do it. It's not, not a viable in-service piece, so it would be a collector or somebody that wants to scrap it, essentially. Uh, the last time we did the ladder truck, I just put this together and put it on the Facebook page, just a one-page advertisement.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Something like that, I don't. You guys approve, but is that the way you wanna do it? Seal bid, or do you wanna?
Yeah, that's fine.
And, yeah, if I have any questions on the details, but. As long as it says the town reserves the right to prove or reject any and all bids.
Sitting there isn't doing us any good, and we need to get rid of it, so.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
No, thank you for, um, and thank the department for all the hard work.
And by the way, just to make it official, I'll make the motion to move forward with putting it out the bid. We did that, so.
Engine, is it?
Engine four.
Ninety-second, eh? Okay, all in favor?
I'll look at the selectman meeting, two meetings from now. You guys for that meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, make it, yep.
Okay, up next, Stratford County, you know, planning commission representative nominations. Mr. Lee Howlett, planning board.
My name's Lee Howlett, one, two forty-six, Boland Road. Through the help of our town planner, Bruce Woodruff, the planning board approved my nomination to take the place, uh, as the representative for the Stratford County Regional Planning Commission, and, uh, glad to serve the community in that role. Just needs selectman approval.
Thank you for offering, and Karen, I know I wanna thank you for your time and working down there. It's very helpful to have representation at the Stratford Regional Planning. Larry's done that, Bruce has been down there, so I will make a motion to move forward with Lee Howlett be, Howlett being the, uh, rep to Stratford Regional Planning.
Okay, thank you. Yes, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, Lee, for, uh, stepping up, helping the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen, 'cause you were a huge asset.
Thank you.
You really was, so, um, but we still love Karen on the planning board, and we're very excited about that, so.
So his, his term for this will be from April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five until April fifteenth, twenty twenty-nine.
Nice. Twenty twenty-nine.
Yeah, you go on my week, Karen.
Up next, our review update and possible, uh, sign capital improvement program committee charge and, uh, the composition documents. So we have gone over them. And you're set with that?
Yeah.
I mean, I've.
I'm all set with, with, with these, uh, changes.
I've gone over it, I've looked at it, I'm all set with the changes. You wanna wait till, you wanted to wait, um, Rich, till the next meeting to adopt these, or?
So I want to have Bruce have some input on these as well. Bruce is here tonight, so if the board is okay, and Bruce hasn't seen, um, hasn't seen the changes that, uh, 'cause these just came through today, so these changes, Bruce hasn't seen these, this updated wording. I can give this to Bruce so he can review it. And I know Bruce has a few things that he would like to, Bruce, if you wanna come? Bruce has a few things that he wants to have a conversation with the board about as well, on things that should be added to the charge document as well. That will probably be helpful. I gave all of you a copy of the schedule that Bruce would like added to the charge document. That will be helpful in, I know when I was the chief, I knew May fifteenth was the deadline for all of these, that we had to have them in, so that's when I always had them in, uh, to Bruce, so he would have those from the police department, to be able to process that forward. That's what I think, and I agree with Bruce, that a schedule actually needs to be in there every single year, so that all the department heads know exactly what needs we're pushing forward, um, with these committees. I do like what Bruce has added at the top with the TBD, um, with the meetings to be had between the town administrator and the department heads. That is a process that we did prior to having CIP. Uh, the department heads all got together. Mostly it was, uh, for lack of a better term, we'll call it the big three, the police department, the fire department, and DPW. We got together, we sat down and said, "What are the big projects that are moving forward, and which ones are the most important for the year?" And that's what the three of us did, um, in reviewing those. If it was the police department that needed a big project that year, the po- the fire department and DPW didn't put any projects forward. If DPW needed it, or fire department needed it, the other two stepped back. As Bruce is gonna explain with his schedule, that's the conversation of those first two meetings. Bruce, you had some more things you wanted to add?
Yeah, uh, I haven't seen these changes here.
Unfortunately, it is get to him, and we made the last couple of changes before the meeting, so.
But that's not important.
No.
I think what's important is making this, sorry, making this a viable program that works, and the only thing that can do that is to have a good charge and composition document. And I met with Karen, uh, a couple of times, and we've been doing back and forth, uh, you know, via email, about possible changes, uh, to this document, to make it more useful, and make it clear that it isn't just the committee that does things, it's the department heads, it's the town administrator, and it's the board of selectmen that have things to do. So I don't know if you've changed some of these things?
Yes.
But it's pretty clear to me that the statute doesn't mandate certain things that were in this original charge. And they could go away, because the only thing that really is important is making it so that everybody that may have a capital project comes to the committee and submits their projects, and follows the regulations for the submission documents. You know, that includes the conservation commission, all department heads that have capital assets, uh, the school.
Library.
Library. And the, so, so this is a thing that needs to be done, because there are certain things that aren't being done and haven't been done. One of the things that, uh, I think that, uh, Rich has already talked about is adding process tasks to the, to the charge. And really, in this process step schedule that I prepared, uh, you'll see those process steps there. You know, the big thing is, something that we stopped doing, is meeting with all the department heads and the town administrator to have that strategy that needs to pervade the work of the, of the capital improvements program committee. And when you look at it, you'll see there are things there that, and it's, it's set out so that you see what the departments have to do on any given date, what the town planner has to do, and what the committee has to do. And then there's steps for the public too. So when you take the dates away, this thing could be appended to the charge document. There is a other, couple other things. The, the requirement for, uh, a public hearing or two talks about fourteen days. There's nothing in the statute that talks about fourteen days. It really should go down to what the statute requires. That's ten days, so I don't know if you did that.
I didn't change any of the statute aspects, because it's, you quoted them in there already, as far as using the statute.
Yeah, that's right.
Didn't add anything to it.
Absolutely. There, there is a possibility that we might need to talk about planning out farther than six years, you know, the spending year that comes up, and then the five planning years. A, a, a document like that gets kinda cumbersome when you do ten years. But I think that we also need to do that look ahead, so the, the charge document could talk about up to ten years for planning purposes. Uh, that, that is, I think, a very good idea. I've already talked to you about the schedule, adding it in here, having the, the department heads and the town administrator meeting as the first thing that we do. And then there's some other questions. So, again, I haven't seen this, but there was a section, I don't know if it's still in there, that says that on or before February fifteenth, following the receipt of the recommended CIP report, the committee shall be advised by the board of selectmen, uh, as to what they're gonna submit for capital, uh, funding requests as part of the coming fiscal year. That's only been done once, and so the question I have for you is, do you wanna keep it in there? Did you take it out?
Didn't take any dates out, uh, well, actually, I didn't touch, because I worked on the document that you had revised.
Yeah, it's not taken out of there. My thought in having that conversation about it is, when the board puts forward the warrant articles, to me, that's giving the answer. If there's a need that necessitates that we write up something to give back to the board that says, "Hey, here's the warrant articles that the board of selectmen has decided they're gonna go forward with."
So, I guess I.
I think it's a bit redundant, and.
I would suggest taking it out.
Yes.
Well, my comment would have been, 'cause I didn't change it, but going along with what Rich is saying, that it really follows, it really does follow the budget itself. And February fifteenth, you get a lame duck board at that point anyways, possibly. We, we didn't this year, because I was the only one running, but you're, you're less than a month away from a possible change to the board, so.
And that date was chosen, I think, so that the committee would see what you're gonna do prior to deliberative session, so. I, I really think that it, it can be taken out, and that's, that's what I would suggest.
Unfortunately, February fifteenth for us, the last three years has been after deliberative session.
Yeah.
So the warrant articles, we've already done the public hearing for the budget committee, so the warrant articles are already in place by that point. So the, the committee's known about what the warrant articles are gonna, are going to be since probably mid-December at that point.
It either needs to be taken out or, or pushed.
To the left.
Yeah.
December somewhere. So what is the board's thought? Do you want me to take that out?
I would think that, to me, I don't know if it's, I don't know about taking it out, but the public hearing that the budget committee holds is really when we officially say that that's the budget that's moving forward to be voted on, and that's in January, so.
I mean, I don't have a problem taking it out.
Yeah.
That's what you.
I, I don't know if you need a date in there, but it's just based, we can change the words to say, "Based on the budget that's been, you know, put forward for the operating budget." That's really what it comes down to.
I mean, I don't care either way. I just, to me, it just seems like we're creating a redundant report.
Yeah, it was just a, it was a strategy to make it so that the board of selectmen and the committee could have a discussion about what was decided by the, the board that makes the decisions.
The only difference, though, is between this, when we put forward the budget, is not necessarily what we're looking forward towards capital improvements.
Right, but you're going.
Warrant articles.
The warrant articles.
Are the ones that are the capital improvement items, so if we change the wording, and I did put that in there, that's one thing you'll find, because I stated in here that it says for capital funding, where it goes, "Part of the coming fiscal year budget and town warrant," because it's the warrant that turns around and establishes it. So I didn't change the date, if you see that, Bruce, and I can send you the document that we had, so it'll be easier for you to edit.
So, on page three, uh, it's D, expenditures authorized or controlled. There is a paragraph in there that talks about, uh, the fact that the selectmen shall not request an appropriation to town meeting for any, for any capital improvement project that meets that definition, unless it's, has been submitted to the committee. There have been a couple of times when this hasn't happened, but the question I have is, I'm comfortable with that section.
Again, it needs, it doesn't have to be something the committee's approved, it's just gotta be on the list.
It just has to be presented.
Has to be presented on the list.
All the committee does, as you know, is recommend.
Correct.
So that it's, and you're not, and you are not bound to listen to any recommendation that the committee makes.
That's one thing you're gonna see in here, Bruce, because that was one of the confusing parts for the committee in the past, thinking that we couldn't change finance, or, you know, what we wanted a budget for, and that we couldn't change any of the projects. But, and then in here, it says it's advisory, and it is, and I did make sure it was clear that it's based on what was on the list.
Yep.
I mean, it is an advisory board, but I can tell you right now that I certainly appreciate all the work that CIP does.
Yes.
It's a very, very important program, but hopefully, you know, um, we'll move forward in a prosperous way, because we, we need this. Unless you wanna see big spikes in your taxes, um, we need this, and we need this to work. The people have asked for this. I mean, it went out to voters, they voted for it, they want it. We need to make it work. We need to work together on, on, you know, on these programs. So, again, I, I appreciate all the hard work that, that committee did last year.
Just before you move on, though, Bruce, because the other piece that I wanted to make clear is, I know earlier last year, I voted against the project because it wasn't on the list. So, it, it is important that we have that there, and we need to make a, you know, collective decision on what we think is gonna be done, so.
Two more things there, really quickly. Uh, under annual report publication and filing, um, it talks about, uh, maybe this isn't where it is. Copy the report published, with the distribution of the budget committee report. I don't know if that happens, and I don't know if you changed that or not.
I didn't change it, because that should be when we start the process, is when the budget committee's done with the hearing.
So the, the last sentence there talks about, uh, that the committee shall also file an executive summary of its annual activities for inclusion in the town report. That was done, I think, twice, uh, in the last nine years. It didn't happen this year. Uh, I think that, uh, it's probably my fault. It's, this is something that I think should probably go, uh, into the town report, but I don't know if you took it out, if you left it in there.
Didn't take it out.
What your feelings are about it.
I have no prob- I mean, it, it should go in the town report.
And then the final, the final thing is, I'm gonna look at, I've got to look at, okay. In two parts of this, it talks about ex officio members, one being the town planner and one being the town administrator. In the past, it's, that has not happened. Town planner's always there. But I, I, I don't know what your feelings are with regard to continuing to have the town administrator, when he's very busy, being an ex officio member that doesn't come to the meetings. You follow me on this?
We've talked, they know.
I'm following.
We've talked, I thought, he, he didn't even know, at one point, he was supposed to be there, so.
No, and I mean.
And that's 'cause we had to chase down this thing, so.
Bruce knows I've been one of the people that has pushed the CIP since its conception here in the town of Milton. So I had no clue that the town administrator was supposed to be part of this, or was an ex officio, until Bruce told me almost at the end of the CIP process last year. So had I known that, I would have been at every single meeting. I have no problem being an ex officio. When I know when the meetings are, I'll be at the meetings, um, unless I have a conflict with some other meeting.
Well, I didn't know I was supposed to be on it until Laura Turgeon, um. Well, I didn't know I was supposed to be on it until Laura Turgeon, um, told me I was on it. Um, I think at the deliberative session.
That was the other question, too.
I didn't even know, I would have been there, of course I would have.
And we clarified that at, at, at last meeting on that one here.
So that's all stayed the same, and, and that's great. Now, the question is, uh, there's only a couple of changes, I think, that have come out of our discussion. Especially about the process, steps, and adding that, adding that schedule. That can be the same every year, but the dates change in that left column, that's all. And then, and then changing the, uh, the days for the public hearing from fourteen, which is incredibly, it lengthens the process by a lot. Uh, down to the statutory ten. And, and I don't know if there was anything else other than mentioning under the process that. The strategy session was very important. That's all I have. I can make the changes or? Town administrator has the.
I can work with you, and like I said, I can send you the document, he's got, he's got the document I had. I had a lot more when I went through some of the state things, we riddled it down to this, because I do know there were some other things in there. One of the things that, I gotta try to find it here, as I was going through it, it's where the report goes.
Yeah.
It's not that, that's not the one.
So, so that requirement is in the statute.
Yeah.
The report has to go to the select board, the budget committee, the school board, the town clerk. And then to whatever you're calling the.
Doesn't have, I was just gonna say, it doesn't, I went and looked up the statute, it is not required to go anywhere else in New Hampshire, only within the community.
Boy, I thought it, I thought it did say.
No, that was what I was gonna go back and, and, I went and read that and read that and read that until I went back and then said, and I even went through and said. Is it required? There is no requirement for it to go out beyond the town.
Although they ask for it, I just.
And I'm saying, we can have a report ready for them, but it's along the lines of, I don't think you wanna lock yourself in saying it's. Gotta go there because then they'll hold it against us.
Yeah, so then, it's a good thing to take it out.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right, hold on, Larry, um, I'm gonna allow Karen Brown, I mean, Karen, Karen Golab, cuz she asked.
Yeah, and I just wanna circle back around to, um, page three. And there was some questions of the committee last year. Um, where there's one that, I, I think it says proposals which may arise unexpectedly outside of the annual solicitation process. Shall be submitted to the committee. And I didn't know if that's something that you wanna take out or, or leave in, or.
Me, I think it should, personally, I think it should stay in because if something does arise, we need to make sure that we address it as soon as possible. That's my personal thing, it's not.
Okay, so, and that just, that kind of assumes that the committee. Would need to meet ad, ad hoc, you know, if something came up, let's say, in April.
So, yeah, Bruce, it's New Hampshire offices strategic initiatives. I lined it out, because I did look it up saying it wasn't required. I added the school board if applicable, because that wasn't in this document. So. I said, I'll get this off to you later on tonight.
Hey, anything else, Karen?
Uh, no. Thank you.
I know you were very, very involved in this committee last year. And I wanna make sure your voice is heard cuz there was some, unfortunately, some confusion or, um. Miscommunications or whatever it was, I don't want it to be like that.
No, and, and I think, and Bruce and I have talked, uh, another part of this. Initiative that Bruce and I are working on is, uh, trying to come up with a way to. Communicate and educate the residents. What this is really all about, and, and why it's vital to a small community like this. Um, and, and so we might be looking for input from people on what's the best way to. What type of material is best to use to communicate to people, um, on how important it is, so they're, they're more supportive of it.
Yeah, I know, most definitely, I agree with you.
So.
It's all about educating.
Right now, it's, 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 people are confused on what it really is.
And, and something I'd like to, Bruce, I, I've added something in here, and I think we need to do it now, is it wasn't in here. And I added the line that residents interested in becoming at-large members. Submit a letter or an email to the town administrator. Okay, it wasn't in there, and right now, I know we don't have it, so I think we need to get something out there advertising it that we need those. So, it's in here for that, because one of the things that I looked at within the state statute and with other towns. Was they have one member from, and, and as we do, one from the BOS. You got one from the planning board and one from the budget committee. I added the words in here that you shouldn't end up with two people from the budget committee cuz you don't have enough people. And there's nothing against the budget committee, but it's adding more in there, it's no different than saying we'll stack the board with more board members. The idea is to turn around and have two at-large members and two at-large alternates. So that you've got four people from, from res, the list of residents that, that are interested. And I think that's crucial to get that out there.
Yes, because you know, we, we did have the, we did have that scenario where, uh, we did have two. Budget committee members on the CIPC. But one of them filled the slot of at-large resident, even though they were on the budget committee.
Which, if you look at any other community, it's not allowed.
I think two of them filled the at-large.
Yeah, actually, I was right, there were two.
It ended up being three people from the budget committee that were on the committee, and two of the at-larges were, um, from budget committee members.
So that, because that just basically becomes almost a quorum for the budget committee to turn around and make decisions, and that's nothing against the budget committee, but.
The good thing is, it's just, well, it's none of ours to be bored, but. And it, at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's our decision, but I do. I mean, I do take what they say, I mean, into consideration, I mean, so, but.
I do think one of the directives that needs to come from the board is that all of their meetings need to be recorded and livestreamed. They weren't all recorded and livestreamed last year, um, and I think all of them need to be. So that the residents can watch all of those meetings and watch and be watching it from the front as the work progresses through. Not just at the end when the, the final few meetings are happening.
It's just good transparency, but, um, yeah, we can get through that. Larry, you wanna talk about this?
Just, uh, been there, done, done that when we were the CIP. But just the, uh, the balance of, of, of language, I don't know where you would put it in, or put it in on a voter's guide at, at the end. But anyway, uh, the, um, the warrants, uh, are based on CIP recommendations. Uh, subject to BOS, um, executive review. And just, you know, so you have boom, boom, just one, one sentence that this is this part, this is the executive override.
And just one last thing, and I know, I'm glad you see, you've got something in here, but one of the things that we don't have up front is getting the finance director up front. Let us know where we stand financially.
And it's in the, it's in the.
It's in your, it's in your schedule, but I know it wasn't in the, the charge document originally, but as long as it's in there, to make sure that we've got it. Because especially this coming year, after what happened with the warrant articles this past year, and it's not beating anyone up, but we had warrant articles turned down. Moving forward, and those were capital improvement items, so moving forward. We gotta, we gotta know where we stand financially, because we're also not picking up revenue that we should be getting, so. There are things that if we don't have the money, we, even if it gets approved, we can't, we can't do anything about it, so.
I'll work on, I'll work on getting all of the changes added to it and have it for the twenty-first for you guys to sign.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, post an appointed, I mean, capital improvement program committee open seats, um.
So, we have, currently, we have one appointed member that does not expire until twenty-twenty-sixth. And then we have an appointed member that expires this year. They're supposed to, by the charge document, expire March thirtieth. They were sworn in for some reason when they were sworn in, June. So that's gonna put them kind of in the middle of the process when we are running the CIP process. My suggestion to the board is that we go by the thirtieth of March expiration. We give that person the opportunity to reapply for that position if they still wanna be on the CIP. But we put, um, this out for a two-week open for people to apply for not only the at-large position, but the two alternate at-large positions.
Yeah, actually, the only thing is, make it the thirty, we talked about it, I changed it, make it the thirty-first instead of the thirtieth, that's the only su, other suggestion. And we don't confuse people with what the end of the month is. People are gonna go thirty days, but, okay.
So that would give you, that would give two weeks for everybody to send me a letter of intent that they wanna be on the CIP committee. Um, it is for one at-large position and two alternate at-large positions.
I'm sure they'll be pouring in. But anyways, all right. We all set with that?
Yeah, if the board's okay with it. I will post that tomorrow.
Uh, purchase of our RC, our ARC GIS software license to complete the asset management program.
So, as the board is aware, the asset management program and grant that you are doing with Wright Pierce. It's been in progress for, I think, two years now. We are at the final stages of this project, and what we need to be able to finish this project is they're supposed to give us two tablets. Um, so that way, our DPW department can go out and can map. All of our assets. The problem with the software that Bruce and Director Walden went and had training on. The software doesn't work with our GIS system because we don't have the software licenses that we apparently need to have. We weren't at hold about these software licenses until the meeting that Bruce and I had, what, about three weeks ago. So, with that unfortunate part, we now need two licenses to be able to make this work. So we can finalize our asset management project and take this over, so that we can continue to move forward. And get all of our assets into the program, get them logged properly in the GIS system. But also continue to do it in the future without having to go back to this grant and these processes. For the two licenses that we need, um, fortunately, they're not cheap. The creator license is seven hundred dollars, they get started, and then seven hundred dollars annually. And then the, uh, mobile worker license is four hundred dollars upfront, and then four hundred dollars annually. So it's an eleven hundred dollars for two licenses. Uh, the reason to separate and have the two licenses, um, if someone is just having a creator license. And they're doing the work out on the road, we, doing the creator license, and they delete something, they delete it, and it's gone. They have to then go back in and recreate that whole file and recreate that entire process. Um, if they are the mobile worker and they're out on the street doing what they need to do with that asset. They're just correcting and they're just placing something. They can't delete anything, they can't change at the, that, that major level.
All right. Here, here, here is a couple of reasons why, despite the fiscal woes, you should approve this. I know it's an ongoing program. If, if we, stepping back to the. To the software that Wright Pierce tried to develop, it didn't work when they came. And obviously, they didn't talk too much with our GIS consultant. I helped to broker them to speak with each other. So the bottom line here is that for those iPads to work, would have been paper. The iPads need to have this. If you wanna go the manual route and not spend this money. Forget about the iPads, because they're useless. Somebody would have to go out with a paper and pad. And a GPS unit, and do lat-long, geolocate assets that we know we have, but we don't know where they are. They don't know, we don't know what they are, we don't know what condition they are, so it's not just geolocating assets. It's finding ones that are somewhere. A lot of them are underground covert pipes from point A to point B that isn't in our database yet. But the biggest reason is, we need to make sure that we know what the condition, what the size, what type of assets there are out there. And that then gets appended to what you see, the point and line attributes on GIS. And you can do reports, it'll help us with the MS four program, that's for sure. But I just don't think it'll get done if we don't do this, because this is so simple. The worker out there, I don't know, how many, an hour, an hour or two a week, can go out and find all this stuff. Load it into that tablet, upload it into our GIS, and it's there forever.
I mean, I think it's very, very important, moving into the twenty-first century, first of all. Not pounding, uh, directions into a rock. We gotta, I mean.
Do we have to have the other, the user license still?
The mobile?
Well, we've got, and I'm only asking, is that we're gonna do this, cuz I see that there's four different things here.
Yeah, so there's, it's just the first page, it's the mobile and the creator.
Creator, that's the only ones that we got, yeah.
Eleven hundred dollars, yeah.
I know we can come up with it, this is where we're gonna grab the money, but. By the way, last we heard, is Wright Pierce gonna get us the tablets?
They supposedly already have the tablets.
Okay.
We just need to do this, and then we need to put them on our Verizon plan so that they have data. So I need to contact Verizon to find out if the tablets are going to be like a normal plan, and they're only a ten dollar add-on. Or are they gonna charge us the full, um, forty dollars a month that they would on a cellphone? So, if it's only the ten dollar a month plan, then it's not a big impact for us to add the two tablets to that plan, just for the data aspect of it. If it's the full forty month, forty dollars a month, then obviously, that's eighty dollars extra a month that we're adding to the plan to have two tablets. And I'll probably only turn on one tablet at that point, I won't turn them both on.
Should be the ten dollars.
For the tablet, right?
We have four tablets and two host bots for like one nineteen. Ish, one twenty-nine, or it used to be one nineteen.
I mean, I'll make a motion to move forward with paying the eleven hundred dollars for the two licenses, we just gotta figure out specifically, find it, that's all.
I'll second that.
Have a favor?
Aye.
All right. Did you have something, Larry, on this particular topic?
And, yes, ma'am.
I could probably do the field work, it sounds that simple.
Give him a piece of paper. If you would, Mr. Chair, I will work with the town administrator to find the specific line off the budget.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean.
Just let you guys know where we found.
It's fine, I mean.
That we went on after wait two weeks.
Yeah, that was fine.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, up next, uh, we, do we have anything else, Richard?
That's it on that one.
Up next, Harbor Network, my telephone system support agreement, uh, for the fire department. Fleet Department and Town Hall Review, he's signing.
So as I explained to you guys a couple of weeks ago, the. Consolidated got rid of CTI. And when they got rid of CTI, they pushed us over to Harbor Networks, Harbor Networks was, call it good enough to take over their con, take over our contract. From CTI last year, or CCI last year. There's a lot of things that we thought CCI was doing that they apparently were not doing. But Harbor Networks is doing those things and a lot more things for us, and unfortunately, that's why our cost for our support agreement has gone up. It's gone up for the PD, the fire department, and, uh, Town Hall, and. Un, unfortunately, we're kinda stuck, that we either pay this support agreement, or we don't have support. As I explained to you guys, at the end of this year, we're, the licensing support is going away for the phone system. And with what they're doing, doing for us, and I showed, I gave you guys a list of all of the items that they are doing for us. Um, one of the major. Um, one of the major things that they are doing for us is the Bright Metrics Call Analytics and the remote monitoring for us. So if they see anything on their end where our phone system is going down, it's giving them a notification so that they can try to give me a notification to say, hey, something went wrong. And they can try to fix it on the backend before we even get notified that we have an issue. That's not something we were getting before. Basically, some of the things we were getting before was, you know, really worth what we were receiving. But now we're receiving quite a bit more. And yes, there is a significant increase in the cost. But Nick's system at the fire department is a much older system. If his system was to go down, thankfully Harbor Networks does have his brain uh at their location so that they could get it here.
It's a good thing.
They could get it here next day at no cost for a hardware replacement. So we're back up and running very quickly. Whereas if we don't have these types of service agreements, we are hoping that Mitel has one there and we're paying the full cost from Mitel to get here and get ourselves up and running. I believe I can find this at, for town hall, probably in my contract services line. I'm guessing the P D can find their difference in the contract services line. And I haven't looked too deep into the contract services line at the fire department, but I'm guessing there should be a way we can find that difference.
I mean, have we?
How much more was it?
Uh, you went to?
Eight hundred dollars more? About eight hundred dollars.
You went up the highest, you went one thousand one hundred ninety ninety-six.
We're gonna do a post office box, so it's four hundred bucks.
I mean, have we, cause I know, you know, I mean, I don't know if we could get a better deal because the school's gonna need something down the road. I mean, have, have you reached out to?
I'm guessing the school has Harbor Networks as well. Cause they had consolidated in C C I, so, because they have the Mitel system too. So I'm guessing they have probably received, I'm guessing same conversation from Harbor Networks. Cause if they were with con- consolidated, they were probably with C C I as well.
I'll just, I'll ask Adam tomorrow, I mean, just, I mean, I don't know if, maybe I just thought maybe we could get a better deal, but.
I mean, at this point, we're, I, I don't wanna say we're stuck with a rock and a hard place right now, but we are. With the support aspect of it. So we can't take the chance of our phone systems going down at town hall, the police department and the fire department. Yes, it's a significant increase, it's a significant increase dropped on us after budgets are done, after we had no notification of it. But we will be aware of it and we can start looking if we want to for a new support system next year if we don't like how Harbor works out.
Okay. Alright.
I just need a motion from the board to approve.
To move forward.
The signing of the contracts and if they want, if you want me to sign the contracts, I will sign them. If you want the chairman to sign them, the chairman can sign them.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the town administrator signing the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sign them for town hall.
And we just gotta figure out, like, so you know where you're gonna get all these revenues from?
Yes, yep, I'll figure out every line, where it's gonna come from, where the difference is gonna come. My expectation for both police department and for town hall is going to be um directly from the contract services line. And I'll sit with the fire chief and we'll figure it out.
Right, up next, request for letters of support from the board of selectmen for off-site liquor license event.
So Deluxe Parties has requested to, they are an off-site catering ser- alcohol catering service. They're looking to cater a uh private wedding at the Greenery, hundred and seventy-five guests. And with their liquor license for New Hampshire Liquor Commission, they're required to receive a letter from the town saying we have no issues with the event occurring. Um, if the board is okay, I will sign that the town has no issues with it.
I'm fine with it.
So with it too. You got the motion?
We, uh, the last one we talked about, do we need to just inform the chief to? Yes.
Okay, so.
We had them have a conversation with the chief just because it is a hundred and seventy-five guests at that location, so.
Yeah, I will second the motion.
Yep.
Okay, so you gave the motion?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Does the board want me to keep ringing these to the town for you to make those decisions? Or do you want me to review the information and advise them that the town does or does not have an issue with them off-site catering at that location?
Personally, I think there's no issue with it at all and we should just submit the letter saying, yeah, we're good with it.
Contact, just have them contact the chief like we do with the other?
Exactly, I don't, I don't foresee anything getting crazy over there. So, I mean, personally, I'm fine with all of them. As long as they contact the chief and do what, what they basically do and just send a letter off saying, yeah, we're good with it.
Yeah, state statute requires them to contact us. So if the board is okay with, once we get the request from them, that I, as the town administrator, just review their facts on what they're doing and then send it off.
If you have an issue, then you bring it to us.
Bring it to the board.
Sense to me, I'll go along with that.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with it. It's a wedding venue, I mean, they're not drinking Kool-Aid, so. Just saying. Anyways.
Yeah, no, I'm good. D R A mass appraisal report and uh compliance checklist.
So you have a copy of the review of the mass appraisal report and the letter of transmittal? And you have the letter from D R A advising that we met all standards and we are compliant?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. Letter from New Hampshire Liquor Commission in reference to an off-site catering license request by Roaming Catering LLC.
Um, so this is a letter from the New Hampshire Department of Liquor advising us that Roaming, Roaming Catering LLC um is looking to get a catering license, an off-site caterer's license, and they're looking to establish, um, they're listing their address as Spare Box Storage Commerce Way Unit uh eighty-two. Um, I did do a little bit of checking into this and because they are an off-site caterer's location, they can list a storage location because they have to list where they're storing their product. So they can do that. Because they don't have, they basically, they don't have a facility, they're, they don't have a bar where they're serving those and they're an off-site location. So they have to list uh the location as to where they are uh storing their items. So they won't be serving out of that location.
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand that, it just, oh, it just doesn't sit well. But I guess if it's within the law, I mean, it really, using a storage? I mean, I understand they store their stuff there, but it just doesn't, I don't know, something just isn't adding up, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead Larry.
May I suggest that you, the, you check the original uh permissions uh for that storage uh facility to operate? I'm.
Not a bad idea.
Not certain that the restrictions, there, there may be restrictions on it for it being used as business ad- addresses. Uh, I, sorry, I cannot remember more, but Chris Jacobs at the time was very specific, among other things, as specifying that there would be no internal electrical outlets uh so that it could not be used uh as a quote, but again, that's, that's not quoting the conditions of approval.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, if you just wanna check, Richard, maybe with the storage unit to, to see if it's alright with them, that people are using the facility as an.
Yeah, and I can pull the notice of decision from the planning board uh to see if that was one of the, one of the items listed. And if it's not, does the board have any um, any issues with this?
As far as the off-site catering aspect of it, I don't have an issue with it, with doing it with others over at the venue here, so. It's just giving them the same type of opportunity.
Yeah, the liquor commission is just looking to see if the town has any um, any information, data, views, comments or other materials or evidence with respects to potential issues of issuing this license.
The only one would be the, find out if they can use that as a storage, that storage facility as their licensing point.
As their business licensing point, okay.
Hey, are you all set, Matt?
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with it.
I'll look into that one then.
Thank you. Alright, make adjustments to the line items and the budgets to place the, uh, to place them in the proper budget locations. Welfare line one twenty dash one ten, please Taser Contract Service to Debt Services.
Yes. Uh, so we just have a couple of housekeeping items that we need to have the board vote on to be able to make those moves. In the budget, we moved everything for the, the welfare salary from, it used to be split between recreation and welfare. We moved it all into welfare. That employee is a full-time employee, so that line should really be one ten, not one twenty. So just need the board to make a motion so we can have the finance director move all of the money from welfare line one twenty to one ten.
Make the motion to move forward with that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the other, um, I don't wanna call it a mistake because it's really not, but the other housekeeping item that we need to move is uh the police Taser Body Camera and Taser ten contracts. Those were done through warrant articles this time, so because they were done through warrant articles, we should not have put them in contracted services. They should have gone into debt services. There's, they'll go into debt services principal uh because there is no interest on those, it's all just a principal payment. So they'll just get moved down from contracted services in the police line right into the debt services line because those are a debt that we have for the next five years. So they have to stay in the debt services line.
No, it makes sense.
So I just need the motion from the board to remove the uh Tasers from the police contracted services and put them separated as they were in warrant articles into the debt services line.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Event permits, there is none.
I don't have any.
Right. Alright, old business.
Uh, you could skip down to number seven. The Comcast franchise agreement. So I sent this, the Comcast franchise agreement out to the board for the board to review. I don't know if, and I sent the Atlantic Broadband, the current one that we have. I don't know if the board has any changes or any additional things they would like me to add to or communicate to the Comcast that we would like to see added in there. I would like to then start the process of sending the letter to Atlantic Broadband, notifying them of the thirty-day notice that we are going to start bringing Comcast in and then we'll have our public hearings. We'll have to have two public hearings so that way we can bring in Comcast, give Atlantic Broadband the opportunity to come in and hear what Comcast is offering. And then the second public hearing will be the board's opportunity to uh accept the secondary franchise agreement.
Yeah, no, I looked it over, I mean, it's a million five thousand pages. I'm, I'm fine with it, I just wish they weren't ten years, but I know they have to be because, you know, they're not gonna, you know, do something like this for a couple of years, you know, I mean, I, I get it. Um, I, this is a lot, this costs a lot of money. And um, so, but no, I'm fine with it, Matt?
Yep, I'm good with it too.
Okay.
I'm all set, and you and I'd already talked, so.
I'll start that process tomorrow then and get the letters out to Atlantic Broadband so we can get the process moving forward with getting the Comcast franchise agreement moving forward so that they can start with the process, because as the board remembers, this is the federal grant that's bringing Comcast, Comcast into the community. And it'll allow them to get.
Expand it, yeah, they can expand.
Fiber here into the community a little quicker.
And I think this will be great for the residents and hopefully it'll, um, you know, it'll give some more services maybe, you know, to the town chief.
Is there a target area or are they doing the entire town?
The target area is the um lower serviced areas. So most of the target area for the grant was Route one fifty-three.
But they're looking to open up right through.
So the first uh franchise agreement is townwide?
Franchise agreement is townwide, but the original fiber is the one fifty-three area where there's not a lot of connectivity out in that area for the high fiber area. We have fiber already on one twenty-five.
In downtown?
No. There's no fiber out on that area on that side.
But hopefully, townwide, that's our objective here.
Hopefully with this, yes, it'll force there to be more fiber pushed out through the rest of town.
And more competition.
Competition is good. Alright, anything else, um? On old business that you need to talk about?
Nope.
Communications received?
The town received an invitation to uh give input on the telecommunications tower that is going to be modified um at twelve Labrador Road in Farmington. I don't foresee there need to be much of an input from us. Uh, I don't think this is going to impact us all that much based off of what they're trying to do. It's up to the town, it's up to the board whether or not you want me to communicate anything back, but I don't foresee there needs to be a reason because I don't think this is going to impact us.
You good, you good, Matt?
Sorry.
New Hampshire D O T resurfacing program update?
Uh, yep, we got their list, we don't have a schedule yet, but their list of roadwork that's going to be starting. We have two roads in our community that are listed, we have Appleby Road in Western Ave. It's about three point two miles um is what they're gonna do from Route one twenty-five Easterly to Jug Hill Road. So it looks like they're going to do a tier four light capital paving, three quarters of an inch, and then full width paver shim is the work that they are showing they're gonna do.
Think they would, I mean, Appleby Road isn't all that bad, you think they would have done something on one twenty-five? Rough out here, but whatever, it's the state. Do whatever they want. Okay. Thank you, yeah. Thank you, D O T. People do about a hundred miles an hour down Appleby Road already, I can imagine, new pavement. Alright.
Hopefully, done with a better job than it was the last time they resurfaced it. Hopefully, it's not done with a great. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any other business that they come?
Uh, yes. So the board received an email from T P P A. Um, T P P A normally handles the New Hampshire Lake Hosts uh grant and they did not apply for it this year. Should have seen your, in your email, um, the letter from the president of T P P A, Jim King. Try to keep this as nice as I can and as civil as I can. I have some serious issues with her email in the fact that her email is insinuating that the town didn't wanna cooperate with T P P A last year. The board had a meet, this board had a meeting with T P P A membership. Then Recreation had a meeting with T P P A's representatives that they sent in. And after the Recreation meeting, there was an agreement between T P P A and Recreation as to where the T P P A members could go and stand and could set up their entire educational piece that they wanted to do and everything else, and Recreation was even willing to, and I think Recreation did, buy them a longer hose so that when boats were coming out of the water, they could educate people on how to not only check their boats, but also clean their boats and wash their boats with the longer hose. T P P A decided, because it wasn't the plan they wanted, they decided not to ever put anyone down there. The town of Milton, as the three of you are fully aware, we do not let any boats go into those ga- The town of Milton, as the three of you are fully aware, we do not let any boats go into those gates unless they're checked. When they're checked by our employees, they're checked. If they find one, and yes, they did not write down that they found and turned anybody away last year, because they probably didn't find anybody that they had to turn away. That is our policy, that if we find something on one of those boats, the person is turned away, they're not allowed to go in and wash off in our boat wash station to then bring the contaminants into our boating area and wash it, so it then runs into our lake. They're sent away, they go wash their boat at a car wash, and then they can come back and launch their boat. But we're not gonna have them drive in, bypass the host area, and then put their boat in the water. TPPA says that they'll apply for the, this grant if we allow them to do the inspections at the boat ramp. So again, I don't understand why we're going to have to have somebody sitting directly at the boat ramp. TPPA and Lake Host is voluntary, it's not a mandatory boat check. We're already doing a mandatory boat check at the front gate. The secondary boat check should be when they're coming out. That's where TPPA should be doing their checks, is when you're coming out. Give people the education when they're coming out, cause we're already doing it when they go in. So to me, I think this grant should be applied for. The lakes, we have to protect them. But it's not a one size fits all, and if you don't like how we're asking you to do it, take your toys and go home. That's not how you protect the lake. You protect the lake by working together, coming up with a joint plan, and then moving forward with that joint plan and making it so that we're covering when they go in, and we're covering when they go out. And I'm sorry, but that's not the way that I think TPPA is pushing the way they want this to work. They want it to work the way they see it working, and they don't really want to listen to any other input. And I know you were on the rec commission last year, and you sat through both meetings last year, both on the Board of Selectmen and at the rec commission meeting. And I think we had a very um, educational meeting at both of them. And I thought after the rec commission meeting, there weren't going to be any more issues, and I didn't think it was going to be um, as counterproductive as it ended up being, after the second meeting.
I just know that at the end of the day, you know, the lakes are our biggest economical engine. Don't have to keep saying it, we all know it. And I think that we should try to figure out as grownups, um, how to make this, this um, program work. I mean, um, we're not building Rolex watches here. We're trying to figure out how to keep our lakes clean. And unfortunately, she's right about some of this, I mean, grants are drying up. And it's gonna cost more for us to continue our, you know, mission down there to keep the lakes, you know, to where they are now, so, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you, uh, Rich. Um, not even a little bit, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to figure out. I do think that we should, I mean, cause you know, more eyes are better down there. I'm just trying to figure out how we could all play nice in the sandbox and um, just do what's best for the lakes. And I wish somebody was here tonight from TPPA to try to figure out how to facilitate this, um.
Well, I think that.
That can be done after they can apply for the grant.
But I think the plan we put together last year. I think the plan that the town and their two representatives put together last year was probably the best plan we've ever had on how to protect the lake on the high traffic days. We have both going in and coming out, getting checked. And you're educating them on where the wash station is, a longer hose, like a- all of the aspects that get missed right now, when we do it, is we check it going in, we don't educate or check anything coming back out. So if they take anything from our lake and take it to some other lake, we don't know, because we're doing the checks going in, we're not doing the checks and, and the wash coming out. And there's no mandate to do that, but at least if we're trying to educate people as they're coming back out, we're causing less of a headache. And I think if I get checked at the gate, and I get slowed down at the gate trying to put my boat in the water, and they check me and they say I'm good to go, and then I pull up to the boat ramp, and I get another person coming up to me, trying to talk to me and trying to get me to check, I can tell you what I'm gonna do, and I'm trying not to be rude to that person, but I'm gonna tell them, my boat already got checked. I'm backing my boat in, launching my boat, parking my truck, and I'm going out in the lake. When I come back from the day, I might be more open to have a conversation with them about rinsing my boat off and, and having that conversation of what to look for when I'm pulling out of the lake. I'm probably not gonna have that conversation when I'm backing it in and getting, to try and get on the water. And that's the conversation we had with them last year. So I, I, I don't understand what else we need to try to sit down and, and as you say, talk like adults to try and figure this out, I thought we had that plan with their two representatives last year. And that was the best plan for everyone for those high traffic days.
I don't know, I mean, do you, do you wanna reach out to either Wayne Sylvester or, or Jen King and try to, you know, facilitate something here, or, I mean, cause I, I just think that, I mean, very, very important.
And I don't disagree with you, that it's, that it's super important. I just, the biggest problem I have is.
Would you want me to reach out?
That, the, the biggest problem I have is that I'm kinda tired of people saying, it's our way, or we're gonna take our toys and go home. So if that's, if that's the argument you're gonna give to us, is you're gonna take your toys and go home, then take your toys and go home, and we'll figure out a better plan to protect the lakes ourselves. And that's not what I'm trying to do. I wanna sit down and work out, that's why I came to the rec commission meeting last year and tried to figure that out and tried to get all of that worked out.
In the grant, does it specify, um, anything where they would, you know, gonna sit? I mean, maybe not where they're gonna station themselves, but in the grant, does it specify, do boats get checked in going in or going out, I don't know, I, I haven't.
I've never read the grant, so this grant is always done through TPPA and worked with the Recreation process. It doesn't go through the town administrator. So I can ask Karen tomorrow morning if she has a copy of the grant, so I can review the entire process of the grant. But I don't believe that it says anywhere where they have to be situated there, or who has to be doing it.
I mean, I think just educating the public, um, I mean, I do go, you know, I go up to my sons in Wingfield, and I always see, you know, um, this particular person, you know, that is done by this grant, cause there's a big board out there, and um, when, you know, boats are being backed in by uh, by poor people's pub, um, there's somebody sitting there, um, but they also don't have a gate that.
Right.
Somebody's going through, just to be transparent.
All they have is a boat ramp.
So, I mean, I'm just saying maybe, you know, and I don't mind if you, if the board wants me to reach out to Wayne or Kim, I mean, not Kim, um, Jen King, I don't mind, I know them both very, very well. Um, I consider them my friends, um, I just would like to be able to, you know, do something here where, collaborative and, you know, we gotta, we gotta care about lakes.
The issue on, where we go to that is the fact that she's saying that by tomorrow, Tuesday afternoon at noon time, we have to turn around and apply for the grant with them.
Well, that's cause we only have a deadline of Wednesday. The extension ends on Wednesday, so that was another thing about the email being sent this morning, and we need an answer tomorrow.
Because what I'm thinking about is.
What took them so long?
They weren't going to apply for it.
They were, they were gonna let it go saying that we weren't cooperating.
Because what, what bothers me on this whole thing is, and I don't know, you know, the state of New Hampshire is still giving us, you know, um, grants to fight the NIAID. So, I mean, if, I, so if we don't apply for this and, you know, continue to do our checks and balances, they might not, you know, move forward with giving us the grant money to, to, you know, for the, for the, for, you know, fighting the NIAID, for the, you know, for the.
And I'm not saying that we don't apply for this, what I'm just saying is, I don't want a repeat of next year, where it says that we're not cooperating with them. We had multiple meetings to cooperate with them, we took extra steps to cooperate with them, and we tried our best to work with them.
And not only that, but two of the people that were working for him were the ones that Karen had doing it, that the work at the gate originally. So, they'd already gone through, no, my point is, is I do know, cause they, we had started that the year earlier. And we've had, we've had multiple meetings with them over this, even prior to last year.
Well, I think there is, there's some, there was some other issues, um, you know, with, with the people getting paid more people, there's, there's other issues here, and I just, at the end of the day, I don't want Mil- Milton to lose. And like I said, I, I don't want, if, if, if they say, well, if you're not gonna apply for this grant to check boats, then why are we fighting the NIAID?
A- and again.
And I don't want that to happen.
This is not something that we did not want to apply for. If there's a way that we can apply for this as the town, we'll apply for it as the town. But I don't believe we can apply for it as the town, I think it has to be through an outside agency. So that's why TPPA has always been the one that has applied for it for the last, and I think it's fifteen years, that Karen and the Recreation Department and whatever entities have been working through this. I think that's why they've been doing it for that many years.
Yeah, TPPA was, has been funding the gate checks with Karen's personnel as well as over at New Bridge Marina prior to that, and they've worked on that because I used to help them with the funding aspect, and when we get, find out how many boats they checked, they get paid so much money per boat. This program came out about two years ago, the New Hampshire Lakes program aspect of it. So that, that was, that changed, but as far as this goes, I think the only thing we have to do per what she said was say, yes, we wanna move forward with going for the grant, but she's got a couple of.
About the checks. Spillations, TPPA, TPPA would be willing to apply for the grant if, in bold, the rec commission will allow Lake Host to do inspections during peak hours down by the boat ramp.
Doesn't really become the conflict, make any sense?
I mean, I think, I mean, I thought like last year, didn't, didn't we say they could, I mean. Saying, Richard, makes sense, I mean, I'm not gonna, I, I mean, what you're saying makes sense. I mean, educating people when they take their boats, you know, I mean, unfortunately, to be transparent, they said that, um, you know, we wasn't checking all the boats, and I know we are. You know, they said that they came through and the boat didn't get checked or whatever. I was down there numerous times, and the, the, the boat, the gate attendants were, you know, were doing a good job checking the boats. Um, but you know, this is hearsay, uh, you know, to me, it's water over the dam now. And let's just, I, I mean, I like your idea of checking the boats coming out of the water and educating people on, you know, cleaning them and doing what's right. I just don't understand why this has to be this way, I really don't.
And that's what I didn't understand last year. We were setting up a perfect location for them to do it, a- and again, everything was decided and agreed upon when we left the meeting. So that's why I don't understand why there was a problem. So if the board wants me to figure out a spot down by the ramp, maybe in front of the, um, the new life, life jacket area, and just cordon that off for them, then that's what I'll have that conversation with Rec, about this is their spot where they can set up. If people wanna talk to them, they can talk to them. If we start to get information that they're tying up the ramp and we're getting a backup, then we're gonna have a different conversation with them. Because that's the problem is, if they're starting to tie up the ramp, and then we're starting to get cranky people, and it's pushing back into traffic out onto one twenty-five, all the way down from the boat ramp, then we're gonna have those bigger problems.
I don't think, I mean, I know it's, it gets busy down there, but I don't think, it shouldn't be an issue. But anyways, no, I, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I think, I think it's worth trying to come up with, you know, um, some sort of happy medium here for both, I mean, at the end of the day, the lake loses, really. I mean, and I, I don't think that's right, and I don't think it's fair, so I, I, if, if you wanna reach out to, to either uh, Wayne or, or Ms. Kim.
I'll reach out to Jen in the morning.
Try to figure out, listen, we, we're not, we just want it to be done right, and we want, you know.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Jen in the morning.
Yeah. Anything on this, Matt?
No, is the board, if I come to an agreement with her, the board is okay with TPPA pushing forward with.
Yeah.
Applying for the grant.
Yeah, I mean. Next, uh, any other business?
Nope, that's it.
Approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March seventeenth.
Second.
Public comments pertaining to topics previously discussed.
There you go, Larry.
Several, um, some, some small humor. Uh, one, uh, speaking for the New York State Education Department Trust Fund, which I am the prime recipient. If you guys need an extra length of hose, honestly, call me, I will buy it personally. Uh, that's one. Secondly, some brief, brief history, uh, two of the undecided co-conspirators are, are here. Uh, and that is historically, what a pleasure it was to have Rich and Nick and Pat as the first grownups in the room. Back in the budget committee, was trying to get a process in place that would have people able to step away from the, oh my god, I've gotta ask for more than I need, so at least they fill in the phrase of your choice, uh, will give me, uh, something. That's a one, one serious thing. A second serious thing, the fiber op, uh, fiber network is on the ground. It is repairable within the confines of this earth, rather than a Starlink system which becomes the property of individuals and not a public service. On that same topic, they're trying to sell off the, uh, NOAA. But, uh, back to the, to the notes, uh, that I, that I took. A serious question, why is it that the, um, uh, town clerk has to use a Facebook account uh, rather than to have something where I do not have to sign in to a private entity account to get access to a public record? I don't like that.
No, I hear you, I think.
To answer that, you've already have that on the webpage, but what we've had is other people. He's not putting anything out that he couldn't, hasn't been putting on the webpage. He's just saying there are a lot more people using Facebook today that look there, and if they saw something, it would be just as easy.
Sort of information.
It's additional info that he's putting out.
A replacement.
Yeah, it's just, just another tool.
Definitely not a replacement, no.
They, the techno peasant, thanks you. There are un, unpaid taxes. Uh, as I remember from the twenty twenty census, there are probably now about six hundred and ten, uh, seniors. Uh, you remember, I might have mentioned that the Wall Street Journal, no hotbed, saw dramatic losses tanking. The hedge funds are seeing a recession come, BlackRock is seeing a depression come. And I believe it was the acting head of Social Security who said his mother thinks so little of her Social Security income, that she doesn't even know when it comes in and how much it is. I think that's wonderful. He is the poor boy of the cabinet with a mere seven hundred million dollars. He is not quite a billionaire, committed to the destruction of Social Security. Humor, uh, and, and that is, uh, on the scams. I had the wonderful experience of a sweet young woman who called, and it was this plaintive young voice who said, grandpa? Yes, this is Lisa? I said, are, are you Marie or Betty's kid? And she said, Marie? I said, go try, kid, and she was kind enough to laugh and hung up. So, uh, that's the easy, the easy part. The hard part is, I did find, this is from the Military Times, and I think I can find it without destroying it. From Vilnius, Lithuania, and this is the Military Times, Lithuania's political and religious leaders joined thousands of. Lithuania's political and religious leaders joined thousands of people on Thursday. To bid farewell to four American soldiers who died during a training exercise. The president, Gitanis Nusceda and other dignitaries stood in respect. As horses carried the bodies of the four young Americans. Quote from that president, for us, it is more than duty. It is an emotion. We have experienced trials in our history and therefore we understand well what loss is, what death is. What honorable duty is. And I believe I have found, uh, the names. And they are Staff Sergeant Troy S. Knudson Collins, twenty-eight of Battle Creek, Michigan. Staff Sergeant Jose Gunez Jr., twenty-five, Juliet, Illinois. Staff Sergeant Edwin Edvin V. Franco, twenty-five, Glendale, California. Private First Class Dante Di Tatiano, Tateno, twenty-one of Dedito Guam. That was President Trump's weekend. I believe we had a conversation about you being down in Louisiana in the bayous. I don't know, uh, what you faced in the Coast Guard for desperate waves and uncertain.
Per waves?
And uncertainty. But anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Larry. Hi, um, expenditure report.
Expenditure report's out. Uh, there's a few concerning lines in there, but I'll speak directly to the department heads on those. My bigger issue, and I know Humphries already spoke about it, it is literally our, our revenues. Because our revenues are down. Right now, we have about one point five million in payments that we still have to make to the school before. The next tax cycle goes out, um, and we only have about. Two million dollars available to us. So, that's not counting the town's bills. And we have to make the phase two payments. We have to, um, also, it's about. Between seventy-five and ninety thousand dollars a week making the town's bills. So. Until the next tax roll goes out, we're probably close to a million dollars again, so.
I mean, can we like, like resend? Notices of delinquent tax payments?
We just did.
Oh, you just did?
Yeah, they just went out on Monday.
No, I was just.
So we have, eh, so I, I went through the delinquent taxes and we have about five hundred and seventy thou-. Five hundred and seventy thousand dollars in delinquent revenues just from twenty twenty-four alone. And then prior to twenty twenty-four, we have about eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Of delinquent taxes that are owed.
I mean. I mean, we do have. You know, I, I know this isn't, you know, the. The answer to what you're saying, but we should, I mean, we do have some properties that, that we could. Move forward with.
And some of those properties, I'm looking to do the auction process, but that's ninety days. So we have to send the ninety day letters out to the, the previous owners. We have to do some research on them. To make sure everything was done correctly in notifying the property.
I know it's a lot of work. I, I get it. It is a lot of work.
There is a list of properties that we are going to look to auction off this year and get off the towns. O- off the towns books. Um, there's too many properties that have been tax deeded that are on the towns books that need to go away. Um, and we need to get them off. It's just taking and having the time to sit down and do the ninety days. Prior to ninety day letter, making sure we have everything and all the ducks in a row.
And I, we don't have any better person on, on board to, to get this achieved, um, cause I know what you. You, you'll be able to, be able to, you know, facilitate this and, and hopefully. I mean, other than that, I mean, how, how can we move forward on? Hold on one minute, Larry. I, I will get you. Okay. But how can we move forward, you know? On trying to, you know, execute on trying to receive some of this, this back taxes that people owe us. I mean. I mean, I know you just sent letters out, um. I just didn't know if, I mean, I understand times are tough, but I mean, we all have to pay our taxes here.
It's unfortunately not gonna be until the deeding process comes again. And then when the deeding process comes again, the board will have to do, um, the process that we do every year with the deeds. Uh, the deeding process will be sent to the people that have a three-year lien and. We will unfortunately have to go after those, those properties that have three-year liens. And again, I'm not bringing this up to the board because that's the process that I wanna go through. That's probably the worst process. Of a- anything that we have to do while we're sitting up here is have this conversation or. Do the deeding process and have that conversation with people when we have to deed their properties.
I mean, we used to like, I remember when I became, you know, got on the Buddhist like, man, we, we did a lot of tax agreements with a lot of people. I remember Tom Gray and, um, you know, and it, it, I mean, people were receptive to it. I mean, I don't know if. We can maybe send letters out that, um, that, you know, for people who owe us. I mean, if we can maybe do some agreements. Um, well, then we've done, cause we, we do agreements. I, I, you know, I, but I just didn't know if, if people were just maybe. You know, embarrassed or whatever, um, maybe we could, we could help if they wanna give a little bit. You know, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out how we could get some tax revenue that people owe us.
And, and the thing is, is we're gonna need it, but the other thing that we need to make sure of, and I know Nick, you're here, which is great, but we need to make sure the department heads. And Rich will have the conversation, but. The money's in here because we put forward a budget, but if we don't get the revenue, we have no money. And, and so there's no guarantee of that five million eight hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. And right now, being short. On money, we really gotta watch every penny that we're spending, make sure it's, it's an absolute necessity. Cause we're that close to having, having the problem of being able to pay our bills. And this is, this has been a problem now. We know that for at least the last year or so when we get hit in November when we were scrambling to try to pay the county. The county's bill's gonna go up again this year. If we're struggling now before we get the payments done, but by June, for, I mean, in June. It's not gonna get any better after that for November. So. But I agree with you. We need to do something to try to get people to come forward and do it because part of the biggest problem with the three-year cycle is. People may pay and then they start a whole new three-year cycle. They don't have to pay the whole thing. They just have to pay some money. And it starts a new process. So there are people, unfortunately, and I'm not picking on names, cause I don't have names. But there are people that play that game. They'll wait until just before that three-year cycle's up. Come in, make a payment, start another cycle and just keep falling further and further behind. That just means the burden is on other taxpayers and what's gonna end up happening is in order to make the revenue that we need. That's when tax rates start going up and we don't want them to. So right now, we're in a good situation with our tax rate, but if we can't pay our bills, we're not gonna be in a good situ- situation by come, come the end of this year.
And I'm trying to not come to the board and ask you to. Treasure to take a TANs out.
Well, that just costs. The ones that, that, you know, the ones that are paying. You know, and I hate freezing the budgets too because, you know, I mean, it's just, uh.
We're not there yet.
Gotta be careful.
We just have to, and that's something that I'm gonna have a conversation with the department heads. They don't, they need to hold back. If it's not necessarily, why are we buying? Why are we buying it if we, it's not necessary?
I mean, the budgets are so, um, you know, so tight anyways. That, you know, there's, there's not like a lot of, you know.
No fluff.
There's no fluff in a budget where Nick can just go out and, you know, buy, you know, half a new truck or something. I mean, it's just not there. I mean, the money that is allotted to, I'm just using Nick cause he's here. Well, I mean, but the money that's allotted to him is what the taxpayers. Um, you know, pass that warrant, um, and that's how he runs his, that's how he runs his, you know. The fire station, um, I just think that, you know, maybe, well, I don't know, you just sent letters out. Maybe that'll help. If you have anything to add, then.
Oh, I ha- I have a lot, um, and I mean, one of it right there, sending letters out. We're talking about freezing a budget. Paper costs money, stamps cost money. We sent out two hundred and thirty-three letters. Seventy cents a piece just to mail it. Forget about the envelopes, the paper and the fact that it took us four hours. To print and stuff these envelopes to send them out to remind people that they owe this bill. It's kind of like us stopping the service of sending reminder letters for your motor vehicle renewals. Everybody in this town knows taxes are due twice a year. The bills always go out in June and they always go out in December. Sometimes they might be a week early. They might be a little week later, but it happens just like your vehicle registration expires the month of your birth. Um, I, I know that it's hard and it is embarrassing to be behind in a bill. Um, but I will tell you that Cam and I are both. Friendly, but also understanding about being back in taxes. So. I'll encourage people now, unfortunately, there's probably five people watching who've all currently paid their taxes and don't need a motor vehicle reminder notice. But we do take partial payments. So if you have to come in every week just because it works for you to budget. And pay us seventy-five, hundred, hundred and fifty dollars, we will take that. We will take monthly payments. It doesn't have to be a payment agreement because if it's not a deeded property, we don't need a formal agreement with you. You can come in and pay your taxes. So, you know, we just also wanna be transparent about the timeframe of these things and that's why. We will be leaning in July and we're actually, we already know because of the way that the timeframe works, we're gonna be deeding in September. So. You know, all those people that are two and a half years out on their liens, September is coming and that's when it is gonna happen. So take some responsibility. Um, be proactive about it and, you know, unfortunately, yeah, you might feel embarrassed, but we're not here to make you. Feel embarrassed, just like we're not here to shame people and not paying. It's not in the town report for a reason. We don't need to call out our neighbors. We wanna be a community that strengthens each other. But just come in and take care of your business as you should. Just be responsible about it. Contact the office, you know. We can tell you your balances. We can tell you what you owe. We can go over dates and times with you. Um, so really, I think that's, that's kind of a start is, is taking your accountability, be proactive about it. You know, payments, absolutely, we take partial payments. You can do it through your bank. They send checks to us directly every week. Um, unfortunately, the only thing you can't do is online make partial payments. You do have to pay your full balance online when you go. Um, but you can mail in checks. You can come in and visit us. We'll smile and take your money and print you a receipt and, you know, send you on your way. So. Uh, unfortunately, it just, it stinks that we're, we're kind of at this point. So we're just gonna be as, you know. Diligent as our office can be, but that's not gonna be sending out reminder notices every month that you're still past due on your tax bills. Um, they went out now just, uh, to give you the heads up. They were due on, you know, January thirteenth. So. We're talking almost three months ago. They've been due, so.
Good words for your Facebook page, too, primarily done.
Thanks, Brian. Administrator? Oh, I'm sorry, Larry, go ahead.
But, um, I, uh, Brian, can you go over the timelines for the application for the. I will call it the Homestead, uh, exemption for, uh, if you are a, a, a lower income. Uh, you can apply for, um, special, uh, New Hampshire, I'll call it a tax circuit breaker on residential property.
The exemption would go through.
That goes through the assess, that goes through assessing, not through Brian.
Unfortunately, we don't process the exemptions. That's all the assessor, that's Sue.
Who does that?
Extension one, extension six.
Then, uh, I'll try to push my, my voice up. There, there are programs available. That can be accessed through the town, through the town assessor. What I will call, since I've forgotten most of it, is the property residential, property tax circuit breaker. Based on your, uh, your income, your ownership of the, of the property, uh, and that is one thing. Secondly, the selectmen do have the power to meet privately. With, it is a, uh, private obligation. It is, uh, non-public.
Non-public meeting.
Non-public meeting, uh, to discuss a, a, a program of partial, uh, of payments. Those are all things. And last, uh, lastly, if I may, uh, the town needs to be in contact. With its own council for recommendations as to what are the best plans to follow. In the desperation of having to apply for a TANs, which we have not had in some twelve. Uh, twelve, if not fifteen years. And last, uh, just a tip of the hat for Leo Lissard. Who, when he was commissioner, arranged for us to have a special dispensation. Of the payment of town taxes when he was commissioner. Thank you, Leo.
Administrator, thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your next meeting will be April twenty-first. Um, the, I have a follow-up answer. From the question you received from the Budget Committee as to getting, um, email addresses for Budget Committee members. If we go through Back Bay, if the only thing you're looking for is just a mailbox. For the Budget Committee members, which Back Bay suggests is a bad idea because there's no, um. Storage or sharing of the documents in a, um, town-controlled domain. Uh, it would just be a town domain email and that would be forty-eight dollars annually per user. Um, if we went to the SharePoint. Where they get the basic plan, it would be, um, seventy-two dollars per user per year. So I don't know that the budget.
Think we can't do it.
We definitely don't have that in the Budget Committee.
Can't do that this year.
So that's definitely something we do need to look into for the committee. Um, and really, I think we should be looking into it for all of the committees. I don't think any of them should be using their personal emails to send. Town documents back and forth.
Can be dangerous.
So I think we should be looking at all of those next year to put into the budget to try and correct. Um, but I don't think we have those type of funds in the Budget Committee's budget this year.
Definitely not, but it is definitely something we can look at and it becomes a contracted item, so.
Another thing that was brought to my attention is there is a push to get all schools and municipalities. Over to dot gov instead of dot orgs or dot coms. Um, we can work with Back Bay. To get our domain switched over to Milton, uh, NH.gov. Um, there may be a, a small bit of a cost for it to us. Um, the grant that the school is going through, doesn't sound like the grant is actually, it sounds like the grant is slowing down the process and not actually making the process move. As quickly as it could if we just went directly through Back Bay. Um, I don't know how much the total cost is going to be on us.
More of a domain type cost, which isn't that expensive.
And I don't know what that cost would be. So I'll look more into the costs and the timeframe on moving that over. If it's a zero-cost changeover. Then I'll look at getting the board's approval so we can move that over. So we're on a dot gov. We'll have to fill out a bunch of documentation for the. Um, for the feds to be able to get the dot gov, but then that process will move us over. It's a little bit more of a secured website.
Actually doesn't make it in, it's not gonna change much for anybody on the outside either. It's pretty.
And we're, we're looking into whether or not we would have to change. The biggest cost would be changing our, uh, Microsoft three sixty. Uh, three sixty-five, sorry. So if we had to upgrade the three sixty-five from the one we currently have.
Uh, three sixty-five, sorry, so if we had to upgrade the three sixty-five from the one we currently have to the, uh, government-protected secure one. Then that obviously is the expense dramatically increased cost. The one we have, I think, is, um.
Shareware.
Six dollars or seven dollars per license that we have. The government one, uh, when I was looking at it for the PD was gonna be fifteen dollars per license. So it's a significant cost increase.
Nick has something.
Uh, when you do that, can you look into the PD and the fire department? Do you have different domain, uh, domain around the same website?
Yes, I'm gonna look to get the whole town.
The whole, it'll all shift.
Everybody at the same time.
Could we just own that domain name, which goes directly to the town website?
Yes, I'm gonna try to get the whole town done at the same time, so if we get police department, the fire department and, uh, the, I think Milton Mills. Free Public Library has a different one than us as well, so, um, possibly get the library done at the same time as well. And that's all I have.
Okay, selectmen's comments.
I'm good.
You're good?
Yep. Just for information, folks, and for the people here, Chris Jacob's father passed away last week. Um, he had gone into the hospital, he had gotten hurt, fallen down and, um, broke some ribs last, early last week. Uh, and damaged his kidney, had to get operated on and basically he passed away a couple of days later. There's actually gonna be a funeral mass this Thursday over in Somersworth, um, at one o'clock. Get some information out.
To the Jacob family.
It's hard, and he's gone through, he's gone through a lot, so that's what, thank you, Chris, for all you've done and, um. Absolutely, I wanted to mention the fact that prayers and thoughts out there for his family. On a legislative note, and we've seen it. But, um, for the public out there, anyone that might still be listening. There's a House bill that's going bef- going, uh, forward this Thursday, House Bill sixty-six. I've been talking all night here, off and on about the cost and what it's, what's hurting us right now, financially speaking. House Bill sixty-six is changing the RSA ninety-one A requirements from citizen. They wanna change the word from citizen, which means you'd have to be a citizen of Milton or within New Hampshire to do things, the people, a person. And basically, that would mean that anybody can turn around and put in ninety-one A requests. Despite how they may want to turn around and saying it's only gonna be people within the town, that is not how it's worded, it is person. Any person can put in a ninety-one A request. Ninety-one A requests cost us not only time and effort, but a lot of money when it comes to having to push, put together documents. Brian talked a little bit about getting information out in mail, well, it's the same type of thing. You've gotta start gathering all of those types of things up for anybody and any, everybody that may put in a request. And there are people out there that will wait on this and just go, oh, I'll just put ninety-one A requests out there for everything. Uh, we just talked about the mail, email counts. Ninety-one A requests aren't just something that can hit the town, it can hit any of us that work within the town, any of elected officials and everything else. So, please get ahold of our reps here, Claudine Burnham, Mike Granger, Glenn Bailey. And let them know, if, if anything, please vote against House Bill sixty-six. Because it could cost us more legally speaking than anything that we ever thought of in the past. If we don't have enough money to take care of what we got now, imagine what happens if they change that and it goes into effect right away.
And remember how they vote.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I do have two other things.
Go ahead.
The Recreation Commission talked about Warren Article Twenty-One, um, putting that committee together. You guys want five members, correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, but there's no charge, you guys didn't write your charge policy yet or what that committee's gonna do, correct? You're just looking for five members.
Right, I mean, at the end of the day, we know what the committee is gonna.
Right.
I, I mean, yeah, I mean, I guess if you can just put out, we're, we're looking for five members.
Okay, I will put it on the website and say that, and have letters of intent for that committee. Come to me, and then the Conservation Commission, Warren Article, Article Twenty. Um, I did get a response from the town attorney, the town attorney does agree with me that it is now an elected position. So the seats that, the appointment that would be up next year, uh, will now be an elected position. So I will go to the Conservation's next meeting and advise them of that.
Okay, alright, um. I mean, it's all been, I mean, unfortunately, I, I know in the past that it always hasn't been recorded. I mean, is, do we pretty much know when everybody's seats are gonna be up?
Yes.
Okay.
Brian's office, Brian, he would have done a phenomenal job of going through and making sure that, um, that's all updated.
Good, I mean, cause it's kind of important, so I know you've been doing a great job, I'm not saying that you haven't been, I'm just.
Thanks, Cam.
Alright. Anything, anything else? The only thing I have is, um, I got two things, I wanna thank the, uh, Newt baseball team and the coaches. And, um, all the people who went down and cleaned up the baseball field. They did an amazing job, um, and all the, and all the people who, um, went down. You know, besides the coaches, the volunteers, I should say, there was a ton of kids down there, the baseball, from the baseball team. You know, they, they did a lot of work, you just drive by there, you'll see two huge piles out there that DPW is gonna go pick up. So I just wanted to say thank you. Um, and the other thing is, uh, this Sunday at twelve-thirty to three, Buc-E's. Is gonna be doing a roadside cleanup, they're gonna be working on doing a cleanup on Silver Street up to the tower. Dawson Street, Olive Elm Street, which is a hot mess. And Charles Street, those are the four roads that we're gonna work on. So if anybody is interested in helping out, um, I know at the end, um, you know, everybody's gonna go back to Buc-E's. And he's gonna, you know, throw some hamburgers on, on the grill, so if, um, if there's anybody out there that wants to help do this. You know, it's just making our town look a little bit better, that's all.
Are any of the board, none of you are on the Historical Society, correct?
No.
We are getting calls, they, they're not doing their big yard sale this year.
Yeah.
So we're starting to get calls here at Town Hall too, about that big yard sale. Is the board okay if we put something on the community news that the Historical Society will not be doing that? Just because, um.
They'll say phone call.
Assessing clerk and, uh, land use are both getting phone calls about it, so if you're good, we're just gonna put something on there that just says they're not doing the yard sale.
Yep, I know, that, yeah, it feels a lot of work, you know, for certain few people, I know Nick's parents is, uh, uh, one, uh, one of the. Big contributors to make that happen and of course Ryan, and, you know, they do good down there, but it is a lot of work for, you know. For three, for a few people, so, uh, anyways, it's up to them. I did take a tour of the, of the, uh, night that you just mentioned at the Historical Society building, I'm not gonna lie to you. I've never really even been in that building, um, but I was in it this week and, um, it's a neat place. And, uh, there's a lot of hope there, I think that building can be revitalized, um, it's not really as bad as one, as it is. So, I, you know, and I know the Historical Society, that they're working on doing some upgrades. Um, but I know the, the clock tower needs some work, that's really the big issue there. So, but I think, I think there's hope for that building, so. But anyways, that's all I got. Anything else?
Nope. Want me to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All in favor?